It's hard, all right? I don't know. All right. I'm going to talk to you. I said, let me look at a little bit. I said, hey, I don't think I agree with you. I think that's a check on us. Although you can't accept it if your heart's in the water solution.
Well, I think Josh should have kind of just told you. The guy doesn't act or that poor 23.
Traditional sidewalk.
Um, sorry.
Because I don't.
I don't think I'm.
What is and isn't he? So, are we talking? Because they're.
You can try it one.
All right. You want to. Also. You can't believe the girl. That's. That's. Should have been. You know what? Actually, I can't challenge someone in my house. I heard. More over. Okay. There you go. A call to order Grand Forks City Council meeting Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Maureen, roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as we trust and justice for all.
1.3 Just got a couple of announcements today. We just arrived a little late today because we were over at the county commission meeting, and it was great. We ended up getting unanimous approval for all those projects, so we just have one more meeting with the school board, then it all comes back together here at the beginning of February for final approval for all those development projects. So definitely pretty exciting. I hope everyone had a nice day off, for those who did, for Martin Luther King Day. Certainly a man that inspired us all, and great that we were able to have that day in remembrance. Let's see here. And last thing, a couple of weeks ago, along with the recommendation from Mr. Weber, I went up and did a photo shoot with my family at the Red River Regional Council with, was one of the four mayors that took part in that, just to bring some more spotlight into the recreational areas that we have all up through the Red River Valley and, I guess, all the way up in Pembina. So it was a good time and was able to get up there and do that. With that, all I have today, so move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is a legislative committee update.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council were in the first week, and I just wanted to give an overview that Mr. Bernstrom sent out the update last week, but I wanted to highlight today, Mr. Hodak is here, and we have been testifying already today on a couple of assessment bills, and these are, have been with us before, so we did respond, and we should be very thankful across the board of our department heads. They really are subject matter experts, and thank goodness the state of North Dakota has the city of Grand Forks, and our department heads to testify to some of these bills that we see every two years. So Paul, Mr. Hodak did testify on some assessment bills today, too, and I think he's got more this week. Maureen Stor said submitted testimony on a special assessment bill that will be near to us in trying to cancel specials and trying to use what we have with our loan and stabilization funds, so we testified regarding that particular bill. Mr. Gaustad is working on several also regarding municipal courts, free speech, emergency powers, all in that order, so we're trying to sustain what we can do, and the one thing we do is we try to maintain local authority wherever possible, all the great things we've been doing here locally, and there's always a run at trying to limit what we can do on a day-to-day basis. So we've been trying to push back on that, whether it's in assessing or special assessments or emergency powers that we have in the city of Grand Forks. So we've been testifying on that, on all those. The mayor also submitted testimony on regarding emergency powers of the state of North Dakota and how we partner locally with government emergency orders and how that really intertwines and how we get things done throughout this pandemic. And then finally, there's a revised bonding bill, House Bill 1132, and as you recall, we were quite excited about the bonding bill. It was going to be a 1.1 billion plus. Now it's a 700 million plus bill, and it's certainly not nearly as good as it used to be. And so we'll have some work to do regarding that bill and trying to meet some of the needs that we have here in Grand Forks and our regions, so we'll have to take a further look at that. It certainly has been trimmed down, and it's certainly not as game-changing as it once was when it entered the session. So with that, I'd ask, I asked Mr. Bernstrom if he could come up and kind of give everyone an overview of how we'll engage, and so Mr. Bernstrom and I will be working together with our two co-chairs, being Brett Weber and Mr. Veen, and John, if you could kind of say a few words on how we do things.
Thank you, Todd, mayor, members of council. So the legislative committee, we meet every Friday afternoon, starts with a conference call with the North Dakota League of Cities. League of Cities will go through their bills of what is being addressed at the committee level the following week. We then, as a Grand Forks Legislative Committee, have a, I don't know, call a separate meeting. The meeting continues without the league discussing bills that we see on our calendar. Lots of times, they do match up with the North Dakota League of Cities bills. And after that meeting, you saw last week, I sent out a report from that, equivalent of almost minutes. I'll send that to you guys as city council and the rest of the legislative committee every Friday. I also send that off to our House and Senate members from the city of Grand Forks. And then I also post that to the web immediately, so all of that will happen Friday evening. As the week goes on, when we get to these committee meetings, Todd mentioned the testimony that's submitted, and I will also reach out to North Dakota League of Cities and also our local legislators that are on those committees and just let them know that testimony's coming, coming from the city, and that the, what the testimony support opposition, so they're aware. It creates a pretty good dialogue with our legislators, even today, some back and forth with some alleged, hey, here's what we heard in committee, this is what happened. One bill specifically from Mr. Hodak amended to a study. We got that right, right from the committee floor. Just to give you an idea, so far in the House, and the House is done submitting their bills, they submitted 500, 500 bills on the House side. The Senate has the rest of this week to submit bills. They are at 268, so I expect more bills from the Senate side. As a city, we're tracking 101 of those. So on the city website, grandforksgov.com/legislature, you'll see our bills, I'm still getting caught up from the 200 or so that got introduced on Monday, so by the end of this week, I'll get, the city website will be up to date, and then as, after next Monday, they're done submitting bills, and they'll just work with what they have in front of them, both on the Senate and the House side. So that's grandforksgov.com/legislature to see the, the city bills are tracking. This year, we did it a little bit different. You can also sort those by our priorities, support, oppose, and then as the legislature goes on, whether the bill is alive or dead. Any questions from a communication standpoint from council?
I think one thing we've heard is we talked about Team Grand Forks a lot, and as part of, I think, what the legislatures really appreciate, the city of Grand Forks has been a leader in getting information out to legislators, legislators, so that we've really been effective in the past and really do a great job, and John's been, and really kind of the, we'll call it the facilitator in doing all that great stuff. So thanks to John, he'll do a great job, and the committee is made up of, as you know, two co-chairs with council member Veen and Weber, and then department heads, and then our facilitator, John, helps us along the way. So it'll be a rush at the start, and then things slow down, and then when we go over a crossover, it'll be another rush. And so we do try to do at about halftime, we do a Grand Forks Day, we go down to the legislature, and so we want to have as many people from Grand Forks go down there as possible and continue the momentum in the second half of the. So with that, Mayor Bochensky, I would hand it over to council member Veen or Weber, if they have anything further to say.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, Mr. Veen, certainly appreciate you guys' help with this, so who would like to go first?
If I may, first of all, thanks to city administrator Phelan and Mr. Bernstrom for their excellent work. John, really nice work on the website this year, very user-friendly. Every session, it's, it's so impressive to see the wealth of expertise and knowledge that our city staff have, and the respect that that garners for us across the state. And our legislative delegation really appreciates what we do, which seems to just be common sense to communicate clearly with your legislative delegation, but every, every session, I'm struck that we seem to be a leader across the state in doing that and working collaboratively with our legislative delegation. So thanks for the work. Ken?
Yeah, I would just, just add, thanks Brett for those words. I would, I would agree with everything that was said. My, my major question maybe is when, what is the date for the Grand Forks Day at the legislature?
I believe that's. John, do you have that date or Brett?
March 6th, I believe, is the date.
I think it's the, the 4th.
The crossover is, the last day of the first session is February 26th. Legislature then goes into recess that Monday and Tuesday the following week. Grand Forks Day then is the following Thursday, so the 3rd or 4th in, in there. We'll be down there for a couple, is the 4th?
I think he's looking it up. Or Todd's got it.
Not having a calendar in front of me, that's where it falls.
Wednesday is the 3rd, Thursday is the 4th, Friday is the 5th.
Will be representatives from Grand Forks probably all three of those days in business.
Well, seeing the, the recent House bonding bill, I think we've got some work to do because that wasn't looking too friendly to Grand Forks, so not too excited about that, but it's early, so.
It's early.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yep, Mr. Sandy, please.
Thank you. I, because of the time of those legislative committee meetings, I haven't had the chance to attend one in my 10 years on the council. Is that group actually voting as to whether they support or oppose these bills, or how do we come to the, to the summary that says we support House Bill 1130, for example?
So what we've always done is, back in November, a list of legislative priorities were brought to council, and then some specifics under each of those broader categories. And generally speaking, if we're in the purview of those priorities, then we move forward with council approval. If there's something that comes up that falls outside of those priorities or even seems questionable within those priorities, we've always brought those back to council or the committee of the whole for approval before moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Can you, do you, off the top of your head, have more information related to House Bill 1130?
1132?
11, 1130. Municipal court judgments, is that the only municipal court bill that they're currently, that we're currently tracking, or is that the one that's specifically related to treating municipal court judges the same as other judges?
So I believe we've been in contact with, with Judge Boucher, and Mr. Gaustad is working on that. Is that right, Dan?
I can answer the question. Yeah. It, it deals with fines that are imposed by municipal court. If people don't pay the fines, then they have to issue a bench warrant, and it becomes, you know, people just can't pay the fines, and so they arrest them, bring them in front of the judge again, and it becomes a cycle. And so what they're trying to do is to convert those into civil judgments in district court so that they don't continually just have to issue bench warrants. That's what that 11, House Bill 1130 was about. And so we supported that because Judge Boucher didn't want to continually have to arrest people for not being able to pay fines.
And the discussion on Friday included Chief Nelson as well, and Chief Nelson, we checked with him on these kinds of law enforcement-related issues also.
Very good. Did the legislative committee take up the discussion on the bill that intends to treat municipal court judges the same as other judges in the state of North Dakota? I don't know the answer to that, and I can certainly find that out and let you know. If the legislative committee discusses that, I think that's something that should come before the city council, before we would take a stand on it. Who knows? Maybe it'll just go down in flames before going anywhere. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else in the legislative committee before we move on?
With the rapidly moving target right now, as Mr. Bernstrom noted, they're still writing bills, bills are being eliminated, revised, they'll be revised throughout the session, but it's a changing environment. We're trying to get that all tracked right now, and then those are available on the city's legislative committee website.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll move it down to 2.2.
COVID-19 vaccination update and dashboard update.
All right, I'll give a quick update from the governor's call last week. There was really three strategic pillars that he laid out going into the future, number one being the rapid surveillance testing, and, you know, we've talked ad nauseam about that, and it's not the most, the Bi-Nex now is not the most accurate test, but it is very accurate at finding people that are capable of spreading the virus, so he's really pushed a plan of many, many multiple tests and figured ways to do that. We have been doing that now as part of our PCR testing at the High Performance Center, and then we've set up a few standalone Bi-Nex testing at both the Columbia Mall and the Grand Cities Mall. We've got great help from the fire department, police department, and we were able to partner with the public school district as well to come there and get tested. Of course, it was all free, and we have been catching some cases, so that's, that's been good. The second pillar was vaccinations. We've been working very hard on that strategy, and in conjunction with our institutional partners, with Ms. Swanson and the Grand Forks Public Health Officer, we have consolidated a lot of the vaccines that are coming in, at least for the, and centralized the plan, at least for the early stages here of 1B, so we can get through with the most simple plan with less confusing multiple lists. We've got, everything's being run through public health, and Altra is helping out in the back end. Now, we have one list with one number to call, so it's back to the All True hotline, which is a, you know, a number that people know and are comfortable with in town, so I will give that number out here, just for anyone that's listening, 701-780-6358. No, we're really excited. I think this is going to be great. Had a lot of positive community feedback, and any time you make a move like this, there's going to be negative, too, but largely it's been positive. Certainly an opportunity to reduce public confusion and to get the most people vaccinated as quickly as possible, so we're really excited. That's the biggest thing, to get to that herd immunity as quickly as we can, so we can move forward. And the final pillar that he, the governor really impressed upon was fusion centers, and that's something that other mayors and other city and county leadership kind of had to be pushed towards. Fortunately, here in Grand Forks, Altra's really taken the lead on that, and we haven't had to have our hands on that, but the governor really stressed the importance of getting pre-treatments for that, for COVID, so as soon as you get tested positive, wait, if you're in that older segment, don't wait until you're, you know, you're having heavy symptoms and have to be admitted. Get, get on that ahead of time, because once you're sick enough to admit yourself in ER, it's, it's too late for those fusion centers and that treatment, and Altra's has their fusion center up and running and has plenty of material to, to serve the community. So Ms. Swanson, do you have any other updates you wanted to add for the next couple of weeks?
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky and members of the council. I didn't plan a formal presentation, but you do have Michael's dashboard. Michael Doolitz and Maurice Nicolet are data analysts, have put together a really nice dashboard for this week, and it is uploaded on your agenda, and there are some additional indicators related to vaccination, so I just wanted to point those out to you. If it appears that Grand Forks County is a little bit lower than some of the other metro areas in terms of the number of doses that we've given or by percent of population, it's largely related to our demographics and our occupations. In some of the other communities, they have more people in long-term care and more healthcare workers, so their numbers are a little bit higher. So we expect that to level out as we ramp out our, ramp up our efforts to vaccinate. We have shared goals among all of our partners to get vaccines out as quickly and as efficiently as possible, and within the week that we receive doses, and we have largely done that to date through some really great efforts. I think that there are some concerns about accessibility, and we are addressing those with our partners and with patients that call the All True hotline. Once again, that number is 780-6358. We are currently vaccinating in Phase 1B in the very first tier, which is for people over 75, so that's really our focus for this week, along with second doses for people who have had their first dose. I'm happy to answer any questions, but before I do that, I just want to give a really big shout-out to the team at Grand Forks Public Health Department for pivoting whenever new changes come up, whether it's local allocations or state allocations or federal allocations, which we anticipate could change in the near future, and we've just been very nimble with our planning to respond to all of those frequent-changing things that are happening. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I look forward to bringing you good news on the vaccination front every week going forward.
Thank you. Did Mr. Doolitz have a presentation on that, to be on the vaccines, or was it just the dashboard?
Just the dashboard for this evening.
So any questions on the vaccines, please?
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yeah?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of calls, maybe others did, too, just about the vulnerable populations that may not be able to get in to the Alara Center, and Swanson, you said you're working on some solutions for that. Can they just call the hotline? Is that what they need to do?
Yes, Mayor Bochensky, members of the council and councilman Veen, yes, they can call the hotline and indicate their need for any accommodations. We have also put together a list of anticipated people within the community that may have some special needs, and we're trying to accommodate them as much as possible. What we would like to do is get through this large bowl of people that are able to come to large community clinics while at the same time identifying who has issues receiving their vaccine there, making note of that, and then addressing those concerns as we're able to. I would expect that in the future, some of our community partners that are very able to vaccinate those individuals may be back in the mix in terms of future planning, so we certainly hope that those in congregate settings and those that might need some special accommodations will have those made for them.
So follow-up question. Those that have already gotten their first vaccine and are waiting for their second, will they receive their second the same way they got their first?
We certainly recognize that that is the most ideal, and to the extent that the state health department has already allocated those second doses for individuals, we would not want to interrupt that supply issue. So for example, Altru is currently vaccinating second doses with their healthcare workers, long-term care. long-term care facilities have a pipeline for receiving their doses as well, so we want to make sure that those continue.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Mock?
So, I've received some calls as well, and I think there is some confusion. So with these community partners who have been administering vaccines, are they able to continue doing that in the future? Can they get vaccines?
I think, I can take that, it's, they've largely helped on 1A, so as we go to 1B, where there's larger populations, then it's been centralized. And we're looking to get to a point where we're going to be able to decentralize it again in the future, but we're eliminating confusion right now with 22 different providers and, you know, people getting on multiple lists. The pivot came last week when the State Health Department had originally had a plan where there was going to be three different rotating groups, so originally it was going to go to healthcare providers, the second week was going to go to tribal and public health, and then the third week was going to go to pharmacies. So, you know, if someone's on a list for healthcare that week and they don't get it, then they're going to have to try to get on the list for public health the next week, and then the third week on pharmacies, and having 22 different lists. And a number of senior citizens and other populations have reached out and said, well, what list am I supposed to be getting on? How do I know I'm going to get my turn? How am I going to make sure I don't get skipped? And the other concern was that, okay, if a person ends up on five different lists and they get their vaccine, are they going to pull themselves off the other four lists? Or are we going to have four no-shows at other places that we have to deal with? So in centralizing, I think that largely it eliminates that confusion, and there's only one list that the community holds, and that people will get vaccinated through their tiers.
So then, I mean, I can understand that confusion, so there's only one list. So for some of those, you know, at the aid group that we're at, I imagine we would have mobility issues and pre-existing conditions. Is there a way to go to those people who cannot go to a congregate setting like the Alaris?
And that's what we're working on right now. If they call in and just address that they have that, then we will work in on the ways to get them served.
And then can we work with our community partners to get that back up?
Yep, exactly. Everything is initially going to go through Public Health, and if that, if that, if there ends up being, you know, a population that we can't serve that way, and we need to spread that out, there's, you know, we've got those partners that are there, and later on down the line, they'll be, you know, more involved as well.
In future, you know, as we go beyond these tiers and future tiers, we'll be incorporating those community partners again to help distribute, maybe to go to workplaces or various, I mean, for instance, I've gotten a flu shot at work for years, I would assume we would want to offer ease of vaccine to various members of the population.
Yeah, and certainly keep in mind that, you know, this, this may end up being a yearly vaccination that you're going to have to get, so certainly down the line, not only as we get through these tiers, but into the future, you know, next year, it'll be back to a normal situation where we're not in the midst of a pandemic and needing, you know, 70,000 people to be vaccinated. All right, Mr. Doolitz?
Actually, Mayor, I do have a question.
Ms. Dockler, please.
I'm wondering, how quickly are we filling up those vaccination spots for that Tier 1B? Are we kind of meeting the capacity at which we want to be meeting, so that we're maxing out on getting all, everybody signed up, or are we lagging behind? And if we're lagging behind, why is that? You know, is it because of a communication issue, because of our pivot, just because we need to figure out how things all work together? Is it because there's not enough outreach that's happening to those particular populations? They're not necessarily always on Facebook, or Instagram, or TikTok, or things like that that we typically use to message these days. You know, what's going on with that? And then also, just to tell, kind of dovetail off of what Vice President Mock said, you know, when we're done with the first part of Tier 1B, and we go to teachers, for example, are we going to be going into the school system to do that? Because the prime time to go and get your vaccine is during the workday, and those teachers are in the classroom, and that would become a problem for a lot of them to be leaving to go get their vaccinations. So is there, you know, a game plan for that moving forward?
If I could, I'll start, and then I'll let Ms. Swanson finish, but I'll start by saying I'm not on TikTok either, so I'd have a hard time getting my info there. I do believe that the list is well full, we've got probably many weeks in reserve already, and then just the 75-plus, and would expect the same in the 65 to 74 with two underlying conditions. And yeah, as we get there, we're probably many weeks, looking at the schools as the bottom of Tier 1B, you know, that's probably, you know, unfortunately, with the slow rollout of the vaccine, that's still probably two months away. But Ms. Swanson, maybe you can hit on how the list has been filling up. I know, it sounds like we're pretty well set already for tomorrow, and then Saturday's full, and looking to next week, so.
Thank you, Mayor Bochansky. I'll be happy to try to answer that question as best I can, because this is our first week that we're doing combined clinics with Altrus and Grand Forks Public Health Department. And what we've worked on is that hotline system where people can call and then get added to the, they get added to a waiting list, but then they get called to be placed into an appointment time. And we use a software program called PrepMod. We've done that with our four clinics that we've already held thus far, and it works really well. But it is a little bit more challenging for people who don't have social media accounts, or email accounts, or don't have the technological skills. So between the All True hotline and some staff that we have, we can make phone calls and register those people for those appointments. That guarantees a dose of vaccine for them and a time, so it eliminates the waiting lines that you may have seen in other communities, which we think is a really important aspect to ensuring accessibility. People don't have to be concerned about social distancing, mask wearing, or an appointment time or waiting, they will have a dose of vaccine at that time. So we're still working through that process, but we should be very close to having all of our doses filled for the next few clinics, very seamlessly with this process, or at least that's what we are anticipating. We recognize that they, that we need to do more outreach, especially in non-traditional communication forms, and the city public information office is working on some radio PSAs, and we hope to use some other outreach efforts as well. But once we get into larger groups of people that might be harder to reach, they maybe are not wanting COVID vaccine as, in the robust ways that we're seeing the elderly population, we're going to have to do some serious outreach that's very targeted to the groups. So I think we'll get really creative with that, and I think by spring and nice weather, we'll be, we'll be really creative in the ways that we can find people and reach people with COVID vaccine. And at that time, hopefully the supplies will be really strong too. Thank you.
All right, I just got a message that sounds like Mr. Doolitz is not connected tonight, so I don't know if he's still over at the county, so we've got that dashboard attached, I believe, so it'll be available there. All right, thank you, Ms. Swanson, and then thank you to all the public health, this has been, you've done a phenomenal job, and we all appreciate it. All right, 3 public hearings and 2nd reading of ordinances.
3.1 is public hearing and 2nd reading of ordinance to amend the street and highway plan to dedicate right away on the plat of Williamson Field Re-subdivision and give final approval of the plat.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing, 3.1. All right, public, public hearing period is closed. Do we have any, any questions, comments, or motions on 3.1, or did anybody need an update on that? Motion approval from Mr. Sandy, a second from Mr. Kwame. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.1 carries unanimously. 4, action items. Let's see here, we are going to poll administratively 4.2, 4.12, and 4.19. I believe Ms. Mock wanted to poll 4.14, is that correct?
I would just ask to be recused from 4.14.
Move to recuse Ms. Mock.
We got a motion to recuse Ms. Mock, a second from Mr. Kwame. All those in favor of recusing Ms. Mock from 4.14 signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, you are recused from that. Can we still throw out a consent agenda, Mr. Gaussad?
You can.
All right. Now, I wanted to just make note that 4.1, 4.15, and 4.16 were not on the call, so if anybody had concerns or questions on that, please let me know now, or any other items they wanted pulled. All right, so we will move forward with 4.1, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.13, 4.14 minus Ms. Mock, 4.15, 4.16, 4.17, 4.18, 4.20, 4.21, 4.22. I'm going to hold off on 4.23 right now, so let's, let's move forward, looking for a motion to approve those on the consent agenda.
Move.
Got a motion by Mr. Sandy, a second by Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. All right, we would be, 4.2.
4.2, adopt findings and conclusions on application for abatement and settlement of taxes for the properties that are listed on your agenda.
Mr. Hodeck?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I just have a couple of general comments I want to make on these abatements. First of all, if you remember last week when we were discussing these abatements, the South Point property, we had, we had said that they had not submitted any income and expense information to our office. They thought they had, so we went back and looked, and that particular one had gotten caught in our spam filter here at City Hall. So they did, I just wanted to make it clear, they did send us that income and expense information on that property. We reviewed that information over the course of the week, and our recommendation still stands, it didn't change anything in our model, so I just wanted to make that clear. I also got some good news today. If you remember these same property, many of these same property owners, I read in particular, appealed the 2017 values a year ago. I found out today that those appeals, after having been denied by the city, denied by the county, 2017 appeals had been appealed to the district court. These attorneys withdrew those appeals for the 2017 abatements today. So I like to think that that is further support for our model, further support for what we're doing in our cost approach, and our income approach, and our gross rent multipliers. They appealed those to district court, those things have been hanging out at the district court level for whatever reason for the last year, and they were withdrawn today. So I think that is good information for, as we move forward on these 2018 abatements. What we would ask tonight is that you uphold the true and full, we would like a motion on each one of these agenda items, and I would like that motion to read that you uphold the true and full value, the assessor's recommendation for the 2018 tax year, and you adopt the findings and conclusions that are attached to the staff report. The finding, and the findings and conclusions are simply a summary of the staff report, what happened at the committee of the whole, and that you as a city council agree with our model, you agree with our recommendation, and that you reject the appeal as it was submitted. And I'll be happy to ask any question, answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hodeck. We didn't need the district court to let us know that you do a heck of a job, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions, or do we have a motion to uphold the findings of the staff report?
If we could get a motion for each appeal.
Each individually?
Each one is, is an individual property, it's an individual case, so we would prefer that.
All right, let's look for a motion, let's run through this, this list then. Looking for a motion for the Verge Campus Crest, so.
So moved.
So moved, and just to be clear, each motion will be to uphold the findings of the, of Mr. Hodeck, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Got a motion, do we have a second from, a second from Mr. Kwame? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ashland, 2151 36th Avenue South.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Weber, a second from Mr. Sandy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Ashland, 2051 36th Avenue South, motion for Ms. Mock, second. Mr. Kwame, I'm just going to pick two, and they can go through the whole thing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. South Point, 3500, do we have a motion, Ms. Mock? Motion for Mock, second from Mr. Kwame, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. South Point, 3450, motion for Ms. Mock, second from Mr. Sand, he's got his hand up there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. All right, Legacy 5, 6, and 7, do we got anybody online that wants to join?
So moved, a mate.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Weber, a second from Mr. Veen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Legacy 3500, 30th Avenue South.
So moved.
Got a motion, I think Mr. Wagle got involved there, we got a motion from Mr. Wagle, a second from Mr. Veen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, Legacy 2600, South 34th Street. Ms. Dockler, you want to get on the record for one of these?
Sure, why not?
All right, Ms. Dockler motions, do we have a second? Mr. Sandy, seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Legacy 2700, South 34th Street.
A move, approval.
Motion from Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Kwame, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
A move, approval.
All right, we got a motion, Coles, we got a motion. Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Kwame, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. All right, Mr. Hodeck, are you satisfied? All right, if I knew you were in such a straightforward and honest guy, I would have thought you pulled a trick on us there, but. All right, 4.12.
4.12, environmental document for Project 8069, University Avenue Shared Use Path, North 48th to driveway for Park, Meener Mobile Home Park.
All right, I'm going to open this one up to Mr. Wagle. I think it's, it's important when you have, you know, council members in their wards, and items going on in their wards that they're the most familiar about, that we give them a chance to really push what's happening there, so, Mr. Wagle, if you'd like to start on that one, and I don't know if you needed a hour or any more demonstrations on that, but we'll start with that.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief. I think we talked a lot about this last week, I appreciated the conversation with Mr. Weber, Mr. Veen, and, and others that we had both last week and today. I talked to Mr. Grasser, and as always, he's professional and knowledgeable about what he's doing, and I take the input of citizens in my ward very seriously, especially homeowners that have been there for many, many years. And I, I do believe that there is a compromise for this. What I would like to do is, I will make a motion that we table the shared use path indefinitely, but out of that motion, I'd like to see that we place a crosswalk beacon at North 48th Street for people that are crossing University Avenue, so they can safely get to the park. And then what I'd also like to do is, is take the local funds that were being used in conjunction with the federal funds, and ask that we put those towards completing the sidewalk from North 53rd Street to North 55th Street on the south side of University Avenue.
All right, thank you. I have a little second there?
We got a second, we got a motion from Mr. Wagle, a second from Mr. Veen, so let's open that up to any, any other comments, questions from the council. Ms. Mock, please.
So, I assume that that's allowable, Mr. Grasser, if, with the funding, and then would this, so would that change the size of the sidewalk? Would that be narrower than the shared use path, or is it the same width?
I'm not sure if I caught the very, very first part of the question, I apologize.
Is that allowable with the funds to not do shared use path and the beacons instead?
The motion as presented would basically, I think, we would forego the, the federal dollars at this point in time, and we'd basically reallocate our local dollars to accomplish some of those other improvements. It's not the exact same improvements, but it applies to that same general area.
Is it possible to get the, the crosswalk beacon done for the amount that the local funds would have provided?
Very easily, Mayor.
Great to hear.
Yep.
And would the width be similar, or is the sidewalk narrower than the shared use path?
Unless I, unless there's a different motion, I'm interpreting the term sidewalk, when we build that additional width, out to 55th would be five feet wide.
All right, any other, any other comments on this motion? All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, Mr. Wagle's motion carries. Mr. Sandy said good compromise. I agree. So, thank you.
4.19, I believe is next. File approval of Lot E, Block 1 of the replat of lots B and C, and the replat of Lot 2, Block 1, Curran's Third Re-subdivision located at 4680 South Washington Street.
Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant has asked for this to be tabled until the next meeting.
All right, we got a, what would be the date on that? What's the next Monday? So it'd be the 18th. Would that be the first or the second? What is that? February 1st? So we got a motion to table until February 1st. All right, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
That motion carries. All right, Ms. Lundmark, did we have, there was possibility that someone was going to come to speak on 4.23? Did that?
Yes.
All right.
All right, 4.23 is preliminary approval of the replat of Lot E and replat of lots A and E and B of the replat of Lots 6 and 7, River Oaks Edition located at 4722 River Oak Circle.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Burchinsky and City Council. I'm here just to request the approval of the replat of the above-mentioned River Oak Circle lot. My intention is to replat this, to build a house for myself, and then sell the other one as well to, I guess, what, right now, what amounts to be a family friend. We're not looking to change anything else in the neighborhood. I think our intent is, you know, merely just to find a piece of property in the Grand Forks limits that allows our kids to go to the school district we'd like them to. And we're basically doing the best we can to, to accommodate the existing neighbors and to make sure that any needs and concerns they have are met. And that's all I have at this time.
Sounds good. Anybody have, sorry, what was your name, sir?
My name's Skylar Ertman.
Any questions for Mr. Ertman?
So moved.
Move for approval?
I'll second. I just, I do have one comment. I'm just curious if you're a current resident of Grand Forks.
Yep, I live at 51, sorry, 5110 Chestnut Street currently. So it's about two, two and a half blocks west of there now.
Thank you.
So in about a year, that'll be up for sale, Kyle, if you're looking. All right, we have a motion. Any other questions or comments? And I thank you for coming today, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, 4.23, preliminary approval. That carries. All right, five information items.
5.1, investment portfolio summary as of December 31st.
All right, thank you. That's it for informational items. Six, citizen comments. Did we have any comments on the record, or anyone here today?
The only comment we had was attached to the agenda item already discussed.
Oh, perfect. All right, thank you. Citizen comments are closed. Seven, approval of minutes.
7.1, actually, if we could do the vendor list as presented.
Motion approved, Mr. Sandy. Second from Mr. Kwame. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Vendor list is approved. 7.2, minutes?
There are no minutes.
All right, well, that's why then. All right, so, number eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan, before you make comments, I just would, on behalf of the city council and myself and the community, just your work on those projects, and your, you know, diligent effort in going in front of the, the school board, the county commission, and here many, many times, we certainly appreciate all the work you've done to, to move those projects forward, and for the future of Grand Forks. So certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you.
Good, kind words. It reminds me of Werner Nissler, the namesake of the Nissler College of Business and Public Administration, said when he gave, he and his wife gave $20 million to get that project moving, before he said, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go as a team." So I appreciated you, Mayor, being there, and Council President Sandy, and the entire city staff team working on all the details of those projects. And I, and I think we're near the finish line. And I think we'll, we'll have a fine opportunity to have a good decision by the school board next week, Monday. And so I don't anticipate further discussion there, but I think that'll get approved. But we will have a public hearing here on February 1st, speaking of those projects. But thanks for everyone. Those are the fun projects that we get to work on with a lot of great. And as you said, at the county commission, thanks for the developers. You know, a lot of times, developers, and I always say this, if it were so easy, anyone would be doing it. And so thanks for their commitment to the city of Grand Forks as we move forward. The other thing is, I got interviewed by Mr. Easter, and there was some discussion on, tonight's agenda was about moving some of the money forward into 21 to fund public health, to keep contact tracing, and testing, and vaccinations moving forward. I want to remind you, and I told Mr. Easter, that we still do have 1.1 million set aside, and that we said we would come back in this first quarter of this year to have further discussions about what we may need to do. So I don't think we're ready. We're going to keep that in our kitty for now, and for things that may come up. But just so you know, I want to keep that in the back of your mind as we go through this year. We did set that aside for unknown things that were going to come our way. You know, those things we, we didn't know, we didn't know. So with that, so. And I think, Mayor Burchinsky, I think there's some other, speaking of momentum with these four projects, there are other great projects that are coming our way. Hopefully, we can start presenting those as we build more momentum in our community. So I think our better days are ahead coming out of this pandemic, and hopefully, we can brief those in the very near future. So with that, thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Nine, mayor and city council member comments. We'll start with Mr. Wagle. Any comments tonight, sir?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Dockler.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize the Grand Forks Public Library. They were named a star library by the North Dakota State Library, and received a plaque in the mail last week. And the award recognizes public libraries that are going above and beyond in the service that they provide for their communities. Within each library peer group, the state library looks at measures reflecting a range of services, including circulation, service hours, program attendance, combined computer and Wi-Fi usage, and the percentage of North Dakota library coordinating council standards for public libraries. It's a big honor, and I'm super proud of all of our library staff members who made this happen, especially during an era of COVID, which is unprecedented. They're an extremely dedicated staff that are passionate about their work, and so I think they just deserve some kudos.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Definitely excellent work. Mr. Weber.
Congratulations to Wendy and her team over at Grand Forks Public. That's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kwame.
You know, I want to keep this train going. Let's talk about the library for just a second. So I had a personal experience that I just wanted to share with everybody in a little thanks. So I was, I'm disappointed that I'm not able to go into the library, probably like a lot of people. I get it, I understand. So I called the library, I spoke with the gentleman at the children's department, gave him some genres, and some ages, and some reading levels, and he said, "I'll have it down at the drop-off, but within 40 minutes." And I just thought, I couldn't probably do it in 40 minutes. So I really appreciate it. So I hope everybody's taking advantage of the library. They, they are doing some good work there. And to the gentleman that was in the children's section last weekend, thank you.
Great. And the reason you can't find is you don't know the Dewey Decimal System, but.
Don't know the letters.
All right. Well, that's a fun one tonight. Mr. Veen, what do you got for us today, sir?
Well, very quickly, I'd also like to say thanks to you, Mayor Todd, and Mr. Sandy for the work on those TIPS. I think they are tremendously significant projects for downtown and the growth and the continuation of that. So thanks a lot for that. I do look forward to seeing what's going to happen with the old water treatment plant site, and what type of improvements we can be planning for that. And also, look at maybe what's going to happen with the town square. I think that'll all add to the value and the benefits of downtown and the community as a whole.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Veen. Council Vice President Mock.
No, just thank you to all of our staff for working so hard through everything and in such varied capacities.
I'd just like to take a moment to just thank Ms. Mock for, for all the work that she does, and to stay on top of this amidst having a husband that's away in legislative session, kids at home, dogs. We all know how hard that can be. She certainly is amazing at what she does, and still fully engaged here. So thank you, Ms. Mock. President Sandy.
And she's really funny, too. Speaking of Mr. Easter, Mayor and Todd, I saw that I was quoted in the paper this weekend as essentially insulting the previous mayoral candidates, or the other recent mayoral candidates for being idealistic. And having those idealistic views makes you not a very good, makes you not a very good politician. When in actuality, I was insulting Mr. Burkey and Tyrone Grantstrand for their being idealistic. Mr. Easter had the concept correct, but he had the people wrong. So I want to make sure that my insults go toward the right people.
Oh, is that all you've got? All right. Well, we will put that in the record. Jeez, I don't even know where to go from there. That's all I've got today. We're, we're under an hour. I think, you know, the team administration, city staff, city council is really finding their, their groove under the new administration, and I appreciate everybody's work. So let's continue to have a, a great, great year and a future-looking city. So thank you, everybody. Number 10, we got a motion to adjourn for Mr. Kwame. We have a second. Ms. Mock, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nobody wants to stay here. We are adjourned.